Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please stand for the pledge? I'd like for Chief Petty Officer Joseph Sabian to come up. Joe, come right up. Joe spent 21 years in the U.S. Navy, eight deployments and countless operations. He was a member of the search and rescue swimming team with over 100 rescues. He was awarded the Navy Commendation Medal, the Naval Air Medal, and the Bronze Star, and the Army Commendation Medal for Leadership and Professionalism. Chief Sabian retired after 21 years of service and resides in INPA with his daughter, with his wife Tracy and two daughters. Joseph, thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please remain standing? West Tennessee Prison. Corrections Officer Administrator Deborah Johnson was killed by an inmate while escaping a prison. I'm sure that a lot of people saw that on national news, that animal was on the run. Puerto Rico. Corrections Officer Pedro Ririus was killed and attacked by an inmate. California Highway Patrolman Officer Andrea Moy was shot and killed while conducting a traffic stop. Rock Rapids, Iowa. Deputy Sheriff Stephanie Shrouse died in an accident while on a patrol. Please keep our first responders and their families and their friends and our thoughts and prayers in this horrible time because I'm not sure where we would be without our first responders being there every day. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, August 21st, 2019, Board of Commissioners meeting toward 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' Conference Room at 123 Wyoming Avenue at the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. I'd like to make a motion for the reading approval of the minutes. Do I have a second? Roll call.
Commissioner Nocerianni?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask Chris DiMaggio from LaFesta Italiano to come up to the microphone to talk a little bit about what's coming up in the next week. And, you know, there's a lot of great things that are going on in Lackawanna County, but one of my favorite things that's going on right now is the fact that we are in a situation where we just put in brand-new sidewalks all around Lackawanna County Courthouse. Because, like, people think of the courthouse as a place where there's judgments, judgments are made. It isn't just that. It is a part of the community. We have arts fairs. There's just so many things. We have events for all of our veterans. It is a place to go. It is historical and it's beautiful. And the sidewalks, I think, are doing a little bit more work, but they're basically 99% complete. And just on time for one of the best events that happened on Labor Day weekend, LaFesta. And Chris DiMaggio, let's talk about it.
And I bought a new power washer.
On Friday.
I bought a new power washer.
Don't get any oil on those sidewalks.
I bought a new power washer, so we're all set. We have new hoses, new power washers. We will certainly, certainly give us a couple of days and we'll have it just as clean as when that concrete was put down. But that is terrific. We have a wonderful relationship with Mr. Shaughnessy and his staff and, of course, all three of you. And it's a great collaboration between the city and the county as well. It's a wonderful event. It's every Labor Day weekend. There's all kinds of things happening on Labor Day weekend. Of course, LaFesta's in the forefront there, but there's Rail Fest over at Steamtown National Historic Site, and Colts is going to provide transportation between LaFesta and Rail Fest for the rail enthusiasts, young and old, on Saturday and Sunday. There's a car show on Friday evening, which will be down on Washington Avenue. There's the fights, a boxing match.
Boxing, Saturday night, I think.
Saturday night in front of the Hilton. Rain or shine, it'll be either outside or inside the Hilton. So just a lot going on.
Let's talk about how, I think it's the second or third year you're doing this. Tell them, what's Friday? Where are we going?
Well, Friday, yeah. So Friday, there's, it's not First Friday, but, you know, you can't stop once you've started because there's just so many people that still, Fridays in downtown Scranton are a buzz. So Friday starts with some great bands, obviously food vendors, craft vendors, things for the kids. Starts Friday at 4:00. Then it's Labor Day weekend, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. All live entertainment, all types of crafts and foods, and a little bit of everything. It's, you know, alcohol-free, it's family-friendly, and it's free to the public. So you could come down and enjoy LaFesta without a dime in your pocket. And again, on behalf of our volunteer committee and all the charities we support, we commend yourselves and all the support and the great relationship we've had for the last 44 years. Thank you.
We appreciate how big this has become. I remember this back in the '70s when it first started.
One block.
And where it's at now. And it was in October.
Yeah.
And now it's in Labor, it's Labor Day.
If it didn't snow in October, we probably wouldn't have had to move it, but...
But, you know, a lot of, a lot of families, besides the fact that they're coming in for, like, that are out of town, they're coming in to be with their family for the last weekend of summer, basically. It's not really, but it is. Labor Day, you know, before the kids go back to school or some are back at school. But it's a great weekend. It's in downtown Scranton. And if you can't find something to eat there, you can't find something to eat good anywhere.
Right, right.
Am I right, Chris?
There's a little bit, there's a menu for every taste, that's for sure. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Cummings.
Well, thank you also for your work and appreciate it and glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Have a good one this year as always.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nocerianni?
You and your committee have done a great job for many, many years. What time are you singing?
Oh, that's a great, so we have the American Idol singer that's coming in on, he's also the star of The Bronx Tale at Sunday night at 6:00 p.m. I'll be doing a little Sinatra. We've got Dean Martin coming in from Las Vegas and an American Idol winner. So it should be a lot of fun Sunday night, and fireworks Sunday night as well from our friends at Dixon City Hyundai.
It's just...
A lot going on.
It's just an incredible weekend, so please make sure you get down Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, or come for all four days.
Thank you.
Because it's really family-friendly, great opportunity to see people that you might not seen in years, right, Chris? How many people you're running down there?
Family-friendly. That courthouse is, if you've ever not been in Europe, the courthouse really is like a little piazza in any, any city in Europe. It's really, it's really great. Perfect, perfect venue.
Could you show that poster? Put that poster up so they can zoom in on it.
Here we go. There you go, Mark.
Well, Mark's zooming in on it.
Our website, lafestataliana.org, all the information is there. So thank you very much.
Chris, thank you for coming in. Anything you need, you know, we're here. Reach out to Kevin. We're here to help you. Thank you. Good luck. And hopefully four great days of weather. That's what we need now. Okay. Proclamation presentations. Okay. Heritage Fair. Armin Olivetti, would you like to come up to the podium and bring everyone with you? Would you like to come and say a few words? I'm so enthused. I think the fair is an incredible opportunity for Lackawanna County. Back in 2012, 2013, I would talk to John Brazil about it, and he said, "What are we lacking here?" Wayne's got one, Hartford's got one, Luzern's got one. Everybody has a fair. Lackawanna County doesn't have a fair. And their fairs are similar. Our fair is unique. And for the price and the opportunities that you receive, from the entertainment to go and swim in that Montage Mountain to just everything that's involved, you can't beat the price. Chairman of the Board, Mr. Olivetti.
We'd like to begin by thanking the Board of Commissioners for your support for the fair. Also, of course, we had many other public and private organizations, but let's face it, without the county behind us, we would not have been able to make it the success that it was. I'm surprised Chris didn't ask for volunteers to be sacrificed to the weather gods to make sure that he has, he doesn't have three days of rain for LaFesta. And if it weren't for that three days of rain, I think it would have been a phenomenal opening fair.
Yes.
But even with the two good days that we had, we did very well. Our exit surveys of the people who had attended, especially those with families, young children, couldn't have been more effusive. They were thrilled. They were hoping to come back next year. As you pointed out, Mr. Commissioner, the price, what you got for $10?
Incredible.
Exactly. You got the water park, you got the rides.
Great parking, you're not in the middle of a muddy field.
And continuous entertainment from opening to closing every day. But the, I think what brings people to something, a fair like that, is the, especially with our fair being Heritage Fair, was the connection to the community. That brought a lot of people there next year, and it brought people from as far away as New York City, believe it or not. They were in the Poconos, heard about the fair and stopped up, said, "We'll be back." So we did something right, and we're going to work at doing it even better next year and in the following years. We're up there next year and probably the year after that at a minimum. We have an agreement with Montage to host us for the next two years of the fair so that we can build on what we started this year and make it even better.
And you know what else is really nice about our fair? It's the first one of the fair season. So it's right at the end of the year, and you know, it's gonna, there's a lot of great ideas. I'm going to get involved after my tenure as Commissioner, but we have a lot of great ideas and we're going to have a great 2020. I would love for Dominic Perini. Listen, when we set this fair up, there wasn't like, I had people calling me up and saying, "Well, I'd like to be part of the fair." And I'm sure the other Commissioners did. But this was a situation where we needed to have people that knew logistics, knew fairs, knew how to set up large events. And Dominic Perini, who brought all of, got us all of our rides and who's one of the main architects of the fair that's up, the carnival that's up in Jessup during St. Ubaldo. Dominic.
Commissioners, thank you all again for the support. Without the support of the county and without the support of you three, the fair would probably have been a flop, but it was a great success. We were limited with the weather, and there was 6,790 people in the water park Saturday afternoon. That was the official band count from Montage.
Amazing.
So if we had good weather the other days, we would have done the same thing, especially Friday and Saturday and Sunday. I want to thank the Commissioners for being wise and putting the board together. They did select some very, they did select people who touch this kind of thing. As Chris stated, you know, with LaFesta, I'm involved with Jessup. We had other members involved in other fairs. Tina behind me was very active in the Luzern County Fair when it was down there on Susskind Road. So you guys really, sorry, Lauren, you guys really put, you know, a good panel together to work on this, and it took a lot of work and it took a lot of money. So hopefully next year, we could continue with your support and just keep it going. Like Armin said, we have a two-year contract with Montage.
Would anyone else like to say a few words?
I'd just like to give Chris DiMaggio credit where credit is due. It was his idea to have the fair in May as the opening fair of the fair season, and that was based upon his...
Are you sure he wasn't trying to stay away from LaFesta?
Well, that could have been an ulterior motive. But, you know, his thought was the same as yours. It's the opening event of the summer season.
The first one.
Yes.
People are traveling on Lackawanna County, go to all these other fairs. We have it right here in our backyard.
And it was, it was Chris's suggestion, so I want to give credit where credit should be due.
And Chris and, Chris and his committee are going to do an incredible job next weekend. And that's why this committee was set up with all of you, because everybody had something to offer the first time we were going to have a Heritage Fair. First time. The format is set. It can only get better. Commissioner Cummings?
I think it was a great idea and everyone did a great job, and thank you for your time and investment in the project. It's, you know, it's very difficult to get people to volunteer their time and efforts and talents, and you did a great job, so thank you all for everything you've done. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Chris Nocerianni?
It did turn out to be a great committee. It started slowly, and everyone did do a phenomenal job, and the weather was certainly not cooperative, and it still turned out very nice. And you're right, only, it'll only get better. It's, hopefully, we'll get to the end of the three years and it'll be so popular, it'll become the next LaFesta.
There's nothing like LaFesta, but this is going to be a really great fair, right, Chris? Nothing like it. Okay, we have certificates for everyone. We have one for Armin Olivetti. Would you like to come up? For...
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Armin, stand right there. Okay. Congratulations. Tina Dolgus. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, this is volunteers. Think of the word volunteers. Their time, their effort, their sweat, their tears. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, this is volunteers. Think of the word volunteers. Their time, their effort, their sweat, their tears. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much, Detective.
Chris DiMaggio. We don't have one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. No, great first year. Mr. Jessup himself, Dominic Perini.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Gerard Hatman, Committee Relations. Caitlin English, Committee Relations. Congratulations, Caitlin. We have one for Don Frederickson, and we also have for other parts, other people from the committee. I would just like to personally thank everyone for their hard work from when the board was set up to the authority to the fair this past June to 2020. It really matters. Thank you to all of you. Okay, let's move the old sideways then.
[applause]
That's not what I want to sell some feel this much.
You're doing half and half.
Doing half and half.
Look at me, smile, we're making a couple.
Good idea.
Smile. Very good. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. [applause] You're welcome.
Where'd he go?
My good friend Dominic Perini. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, like I said, volunteer. Anybody out in the viewing audience, please, you know, volunteer for any organization. I don't care what it is. It gives you so much, it gives you such a great feeling inside, and if just everyone just gave 5% back instead of like, how would I say, not the most of them, but giving everything. There's so many people out there, just, if you have a little bit of time, a little bit of effort, it could provide greatness for so many different organizations. You just got to find the niche that you want, and they're out there. So please, volunteer, and I'm sure Mr. Olivetti would be very happy. One second, real quick. How can they get ahold of you? Anybody would like to volunteer for next year because you could never start too early, just like Chris DiMaggio, they're starting LaFesta the week after or a couple of days after?
They can contact us with, go to the website, lackawannacountyheritagefairs.com, and either connect with us by email or on our Facebook page. That's the easiest way to do it.
Beautiful.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Armin. Your best. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only.
My name is Greg Popple. I'm the Vice President of the Scranton School Board, and I'm the Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee. And I am here today to express my support for you to adopt your proposal for, to support our fair funding issue with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This is probably the most serious thing that has ever happened to the school district. This is an $18 million shortfall on a yearly basis that we are facing. It is unacceptable. We cannot continue to operate the way we are right now without this money. When you compare us to the other urban school districts in Pennsylvania, we're being short-changed, on average, over $2,000 per student. $2,000 per student. Right now, the Scranton School District receives approximately $4,600 per student. As a comparison, York School District receives over $9,000 per student. The average in urban school districts is about $7,800 per student. We just want what's due for us. We just want what we need to operate the district, just like all the other urban districts in the state of Pennsylvania are receiving. We can't continue to hurt our children this way financially. I know Mr. O'Malley was a member of the school board. He understands what it's like. We have a citi, we have a citizenry that is not comprised of wealthy people. Over 80% of our students are considered poverty, and this is unacceptable for this to happen. This has happened for years and years and years, and it's continuing. We have received some assurances that other, that additional monies may be coming forward, but we've, we've heard this in the past, and it hasn't happened. We receive, we, we have received support from the city through the mayor. We have, I'm also on the intermediate board, the IU-19. Twenty school districts on the IU board have supported this endeavor. We have to have this money. This isn't something that we can compromise on. This isn't something that we can push down the road for years to come. It needs to be done, and it needs to be done soon. Because if it's not, in five years, you're not, you won't recognize the city of Scranton. You won't recognize the Scranton School District. There are proposals on the table to close as many as four or five schools. There are proposals to lay off people, to lay off teachers. Our teachers haven't gotten a raise for three years, for three years, because we don't have the money. We tax the citizens of the, of city, the citizens of Scranton higher than any other urban school district. 41% of our budget is filled by local tax effort. 41%. The average in urban school districts is about 27%. We are stepping up to the plate, and we're doing the best that we can. But this recovery plan calls for us to increase taxes to the people that we are already overtaxing for the next five years. It's unacceptable. We can't, we can't exist this way. It's not fair to the citizens of the city. It's not fair to the taxpayers of the city, and it's definitely not fair to the students. I appreciate your support. Anything you can do to help us along this would be greatly appreciated by the board, by the teachers, and definitely by the students. Thank you very much.
Mr. Popple, do you have any grandchildren in the district?
I have two.
So it matters. It does matter.
Matters a great deal.
I would just like to, I usually don't speak under, um, citizens addressing us on our agenda items only, but I'd like to just say that I was the Vice President of the Scranton School Board in 2011, and, you know, our calendar year is December to December. The state's is June to June, and we had a tax-free budget that year of 2010 going into 2011. And the state in 2011 took $5.5 million right out of our budget, right in the middle of our year. And that number alone plus other, how would I say, mandates and other things that come up along the way have increased and increased and increased. And for those of you in the viewing audience, I want people to realize, being a school director is one of the toughest elected positions you possibly could be in, especially with the circumstances that they're under today. It is not easy to step up to the plate, between the media ridiculing you for whatever you do and these positions to the fact that we are undercut by the amount of money that we're receiving from the state. It's a no-win situation, and people still stand up to the plate to be elected, to try to do the best they can on behalf of the citizens. Mr. Popple, I'd like to thank you for coming in and giving us your views today.
Thank you, and please, please, do whatever you can. This vote is crucial, but you're all influential people. If you know somebody, if you know somebody that counts, if you know the representatives. We've gotten a tremendous amount of support from our local reps, from Representative Flynn and Mullins and State Senator Blake. But we are in a situation, I think geographically, where we don't have a lot of clout. We're the only urban district in northeastern Pennsylvania, the only true urban district in northeastern Pennsylvania. And other urban districts are in clusters, and when you have five or six or seven with their, with their representatives, they, they can get more noise and they can get, they have more influence. As I said, we need what we need. It's nothing, it's, we're not asking for a handout. We're not asking for special treatment. We just want to be treated like the rest of the urban school districts in Pennsylvania. Bring us up to the average. Bring us up to the average. We're not asking to be like York and get $9,000. Get us up to the average. Get us this, get us this $18 million concurrently that we need, and everything will be fine. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay. Ordinance first reading 19, oh, I'm sorry. Anyone else that would like to speak on agenda items only? Okay. Ordinance first reading 19-0207.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is an ordinance for the opioid, it's for the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County. This is the first reading. Our second reading will take place on September 4th, 2019. An ordinance requiring the disposition of settlement monies received by the county to be directed to the reimbursement actual costs of the county and the remainder of the funds to be directed to provide for services for treatment of drugs, addiction, rehabilitation programs. Whereas Lackawanna County is a third-class county existing pursuant to the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and whereas the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does have the authority to set the procedure for the management of the fiscal affairs of Lackawanna County pursuant to the Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter and Pennsylvania County Code. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County authorized Lackawanna County to stand as a plaintiff in litigation against 14 pharmaceutical companies seeking reimbursement for the actual costs and other damages suffered by the county as a result of the pharmaceutical company's failure to warn of the highly addictive nature and dangers of the long-term use of prescription opioid medications. And whereas the Board of Commissioners believes it to be in the best interest of the residents of Lackawanna County to enact the following legislation. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna hereby ordains as follows. Number one, all settlement monies realized by Lackawanna County, whether through settlement or court judgment in the civil case captioned Lackawanna County versus Purdue Pharma LP, filed with the Court of Common Pleas of Lackawanna County, to term and number 2017-CV-5156, shall first be directed to reimburse the county for the actual costs of the county in addressing the opioid crisis, and the remainder of the settlement proceeds being directed exclusively towards providing services for treatment of drug addiction and rehabilitation programs. Number two, the provision of the ordinance are severable. If any section, clause, sentence, part, or provision of the ordinance shall be determined to be illegal or invalid by any court or competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not impair or affect the remaining terms, sections, and clauses of this ordinance. Number four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect 10 days after passage. Once again, this is the first reading. Second reading will take place September 4th on 2019.
Do we have anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this? I'd like to say that, um, I'm in a debate in 2015. It's, you know, going into the general election, and I knew we had a problem with opioid addiction in the community, but it was anything that was brought up, that I brought up during the debate. But there was an individual... But there was an individual there that was in the debate that brought it up, that one of our main priorities was making sure that we curve, got rid of, destroyed opioid addiction in Lackawanna County. And stop everyone's family's hearts from bleeding from the loss. And there's not a person, I don't think, in this room, and I personally have a loved one that died to opioid addiction, that don't know, that haven't met someone or knows someone who has lost one, someone through opioid addiction. So at an opportunity, we found out there was going to be this, there was a big lawsuit going on in other states, and we brought it back to the Board of Commissioners. And we were one of the first in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to come forward to sue the pharmaceutical companies that misled our doctors. Now, I'm not going to get too deep in this, because the next commissioner is going to talk about this. But this really mattered to this Board of Commissioners, especially the two of us. It really mattered. It was huge. It was a huge situation. I know a lot of people who died from opioid addiction. And it is just so scary, and it's just so horrible, that when a family has someone taken out of the equation, how destructive that is, and how lives can be destroyed forever. And our concern was, as the two outgoing commissioners, that we don't know when this lawsuit's actually going to come through. It could come through before we leave. It could come through in five months. It could come through in five years. But it's going to eventually come through. And we wanted to make sure, and under the guidance of our solicitor, Don Fredrickson, that no matter what, whoever's here, whoever's sitting on this dais, that this money goes to stop the loss. Stop opioid addiction. Save family members. Help families. Get them what they need. Counselors, rehab, whatever we could possibly do, that all of the money that we would receive would go towards opioid addiction. At this time, I'd like to introduce Lorraine Cummings to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to my fellow commissioners for your support in this endeavor that I've been working on since elected, and to our-
And before.
Yep. And to Drug and Alcohol, Barb Durkin, all those involved that have been helping me form multiple task forces in different areas and venues to try and educate the public and, you know, try and make sure that we are the generation that halts the devastation that's been caused by the opioids that were brought to our public through a marketing campaign that actually tried to say that, you know, we weren't treating our veterans for pain well enough. And that's how they tugged at the heartstrings of American people and got the federal government to change the definition of vital signs by adding pain as a vital sign. What that ended up doing is creating these pain scales that we started to see with the happy faces and pain from one to 10. And it was a requirement at that point in order to get reimbursement for doctors, hospitals, and clinics, that they meet the pain thresholds of the patients, or they take the risk of not getting reimbursed for treating that patient. And so our physicians' hands were kind of bound. I initially was going after physicians for prescribing these items back in 2010 until I learned about pain being changed to a vital sign. The AMA since 2016 now has rejected pain as a vital sign. I'm hoping that the federal government and the Veterans Administration also does the same and follows suit. They may have already. I haven't checked on their registrars yet. But we've made a lot of progress, and people are very aware now. And we've come up with many new forms of helping people get rid of their pills in their homes. You know, a lot of people are standing up to their physicians, dentists, whoever, caregivers, and saying, you know what? I would rather not take that. Is there something else I can take? And asking the question, rather than just accepting a prescription for Percocet or Vicodin right off the bat, without even trying anything like Tylenol or Advil, which are very effective. So that is hopeful to me. I think what our next move is, is to try and train our medical community back to the original format that I think was the proper one, where people were told to start Tylenol and increase to extra strength Tylenol if that didn't work. And if that didn't work, bring Advil in between. And if that didn't work, call your physician. I mean, at that point, if you needed that stronger dosage, or that stronger medication, they would evaluate it and, you know, try and give you a smaller script than, rather than 90 days, which they're not going to do anymore. Another area we've made progress in. But this lawsuit was something that, you know, I'm not usually a vengeful person, but, you know, I've seen this devastation through the work that I do as a nurse. I've seen it in my family. I've seen it across our county and across our country. And the devastation that it's caused is unbearable, and deaths, and, you know, I just want to make sure that any money that comes in after this would go to the accurate places that it needs to be. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Oteriani?
Just like to say, it really, basically, just common sense that that's where it goes, but that this way, we're sure that's where it'll go. But I'd like to thank Commissioner Cummings for making it, bringing it to all of our forefront and then making sure that we're more than aware of it with her background as a nurse. I mean, it did have an effect on everyone's lives, one way or another, but she made us more aware of it, and thank her for doing that.
Ladies and gentlemen, like I said, this is making sure that this absolutely goes to the right area. Because like sometimes down the road, like I said, administrations change, people change, and then all of a sudden, sometimes, this will be a windfall to save those that can't save themselves. So we want to make sure that this money is utilized properly to save those citizens and just save those families from the heartache and the pain. And when I found out that this was going on in other states, I made sure that we brought it right back to the Board of Commissioners to push forward. And I think the lawsuit, I think we're about two and a half years into it at this point. And there's supposedly a lot of movement right now, so maybe it'll happen before we leave office. But if it doesn't, we're going to make sure that it goes where it's supposed to go. So we will be voting on this at the next meeting. So thank you. Okay. Resolutions 19-0202.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is approving the current payables. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers 287800 through 288309, inclusive, totaling $1,911,154.55. Electronic fund transfers, including all payable accounts, totaling $2,649,648.5.
Okay. Controller DeBilio.
Morning, Commissioners. All payables are in order. All invoices have been audited by the Controller's Office. There are no invoices for legal fees related to the prison probe of the Attorney General's, by the Attorney General's Office. No invoices out of economic development. There is one United Neighborhood Center invoice for $31,713.20, broken down into seven different parts, but none of them involving economic development. It's clerk of judicial records and children and youth. So everything's in order.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. One second. Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Malley?
Yes. Okay. 19-, we'll wait for Commissioner Cummings on this one.
It's a lengthy one.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yes, start. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is supporting increased state funding for the Scranton School District. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, supporting increased state funding for the Scranton School District. Whereas, the Scranton School District serves the residents and students of the city of Scranton, which is a municipality located in the geographical confines of Lackawanna County. And whereas, the Scranton School District is in a financial crisis partially caused by the inequity of funding ratio it receives from the Commonwealth. And whereas, the Scranton School District receives funding from the Commonwealth approximately $4,166 per student enrolled in the district. And whereas, other districts in the Commonwealth with more than 8,000 students and having a similar demographic as the Scranton School District receive considerably more state funding. An example is Redding School District received $7,615 per student, and Allentown School District received $6,808 per student. And whereas, the failure of the Commonwealth to adequately fund the Scranton School District has contributed to the fiscal crisis of the Scranton School District currently that it faces, which will result in the residents of the city of Scranton facing increased taxes and students receiving decreased services. And whereas, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners supports the Scranton School Board in seeking additional fair and equitable funding from the Commonwealth. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby resolve as follows. Number one, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County do hereby support the Scranton School Board's efforts to seek additional fair and equitable funding from the Commonwealth to help alleviate continuing tax increases to the residents of the city of Scranton and decrease services to the students in the Scranton School District. Number two, further, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County do hereby petition our state senator, our state representatives, and the governor of the Commonwealth, Tom Wolfe, to provide fair and equitable state funding to the Scranton School District. Number three, it is further directed that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to our state senator, state representatives, and the governor of the Commonwealth by the chief of staff.
I would just like to say that if you read the paper this morning, our senator and our representatives are meeting, have met with the governor. Please let it be known, let them know that this means so much to the citizens, the citizens and to the students of Scranton, and to their education, and just for them to be able to have a school district that's run correctly and financially stable. And it really matters. And the school district tax is the highest tax in the city of Scranton, and people cannot afford another increase, and it's just a scary situation. And like I said, I lived through it, and I saw $5.5 million get taken literally out of our budget in 2011, June of 2011, six months in. And it was an incredible hole we had to fill. But those numbers have come home to roost, and it's a lot of other numbers combined. So I implore our representatives and our state senators, all of them, please, help the citizens, help the students of Scranton School District in this situation, because they really do need the help. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, if they did a better job in getting property tax reform done, maybe we wouldn't be in this predicament right now. So I would encourage them to do property tax reform to help the taxpayers out, because the taxpayers are suffering under the current way we do it. And we've seen that, all the properties that were lost across the county in the past few years. And just look at our repository list, you know. It's despicable. It's a flawed law that needs to be adjusted and fixed. And, you know, we see the division it causes throughout our area, whether it be what school district gets what money, or, you know, what now we're, this resolution, this area gets more than this one. You know, it just all needs to be revamped and fixed, so I would hope that they do something. Thank you.
Commissioner Oteriani?
It doesn't make any sense that there's not some formula that it's all done fairly across the Commonwealth. Hopefully, this will help resolve that issue, and it's a great thing.
I couldn't help but bring this back to the Board of Commissioners. I lived this, I saw this nightmare come in June of 2011, and it's not like that there hasn't been other boards that have not asked in the past of the state to adequately fund us. This isn't an old, this is not a new thing. This is an old situation. But like I said, it's right now, this moment, and it's about making sure that our students and our citizens have a good school district that's financially sound. I'd like to make a motion supporting the increased state funding for the Scranton School District. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you. 19-0198.
Seven, Commissioner.
I'm sorry. 19-0197.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution approving the Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act property in Jessup Borough. Whereas, the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed Act 76 of 1977, and known as the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, LURDA, authorizing local taxing authorities to grant a tax exemption for certain improvements constructed on defined deteriorated properties. And whereas, in accordance with a purchase of set forth in the LURDA statute, the Borough Council of the Borough of Jessup, Lackawanna County, the borough, has held hearings to define the boundaries of the deteriorated areas within the borough. And whereas, as set forth in Jessup Borough Ordinance Number 9-2019, enacted on July 1st, 2019, the borough has determined that approximately 13 acres Exhibit A is a deteriorated property and is entitled to 10 years of exemption for municipal real property taxes under LURDA following an exemption schedule that was duly adopted as part of the ordinance. And whereas, at its regular meeting held on July 22nd, 2019, the Board of Directors of the Valleview School District adopted a resolution providing that same approximately 13 acres Exhibit A shall be exempt under LURDA following an exemption schedule for 10 years of real property taxes that would otherwise be owed to the Valleview School District as a result of the increase. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, the county acting pursuant to LURDA and the act likewise desire to provide the properties described herein within Exhibit A with a tax exemption as set forth pursuant to LURDA. Now therefore, be it resolved that for 10 years, beginning on the latter of the first day of the first full tax year, following the insurance of the new assessment in connection with the completion of the improvements, and such tax exemptions shall continue for a term of 10 years from the date thereof, and shall be exempt from real property taxes that would otherwise be owed to Lackawanna County as a result of the increase in assessment attributed to the cost of such improvements constructed on the aforementioned property. Exemption schedule, the schedule of real estate taxes to be exempted shall be in accordance with the below portion of improvements for each year. First year, 90%. Second year, 80%. Third year, 70%. Fourth year, 60%. Fifth year, 50%. Sixth year, 40%. Seventh year, 30%. Eighth year, 20%. Ninth year, 10%. And the 10th year, 0%. Upon the completion of the 10-year exemption schedule terms set forth above, the exemption from taxes shall end, and the entire property, land and building, shall be fully subject to county property taxes. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption. Here to speak on the resolution is attorney Tim Kelly.
Additionally, Commissioner, just to let you know, we did verify that Jessup Borough did hold a required hearing for the LURDA certification that is deteriorated property, and we do have a copy of the ordinance that's passed by Jessup Borough and by the school district.
Good morning, Tim.
Good morning. As we explained to you at the work session, this is a high-end development for senior living in Jessup. It's located on a parcel of land that was formerly the site of the Eureka Security Printing Plant. The plant had been torn down several years ago, and the land has sat vacant. The borough has determined that it is a blighted area and suitable for LURDA- The borough has determined that it is a blighted area and suitable for LURDA development. The project we would like to put up is approximately 150, 160 senior housing units, but it's not Section 8 housing. These are high-end housing units. They're ones for which rents will be paid. People who are looking for Section 8 will not qualify for this. The project itself is in walking distance from the borough's downtown. It will promote development of restaurants, various businesses that are in downtown Jessup. The Borough of Jessup has determined that this is an appropriate project for the Borough of Jessup. Likewise, the Valley View School District has determined that this is a property that is good for the Valley View School District. Based on the findings to date, we ask that the Commissioners of Lackawanna County also approve the LURDA for this parcel of land and for the development of the Jessup Crossings Housing Project.
Does the board have any questions for Attorney Kelly?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed his presentation. I'm just, you said it's not Section 8?
It is not Section 8.
Well, what's, you know, what's to determine that it's not Section 8? You guys are just not going to?
We're not going to rent it to Section 8 people. We have, and there's no public financing going into this. So for an order for us to pay the financing that it's going to take to build this project, we have to charge rents.
So the rents are going to be?
Market value.
Okay, does the board have any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to make a motion approving a Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act property in Jessup Borough. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes, thank you, Tim. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is the adoption of the Lackawanna County Municipal Waste Management Plan. Whereas, the Solid Waste Management Act, Act of July 9th, 1980, PL 380, Number 97, as amended, Act 97, established in comprehensive planning and regulatory framework for the storage, collection, transportation, processing, and disposal of solid waste, including municipal waste. And whereas, the Municipal Waste Planning, Recycling, and Waste Reduction Act, Act of July 28th, 1988, PL 528, Number 101, Act 101, gave the county primary responsibility for planning for municipal waste management within its boundaries and for ensuring efficient disposal capacity for all municipal waste generated within its boundaries. Whereas, the 2006 Lackawanna County Municipal Waste Plan was deemed under Section 501(c)(2) of Act 101 to be a plan approved under Act 101. And whereas, Section 303d of Act 101 authorizes counties to enter into an agreement under other person, including a municipal authority, pursuant to which that person undertakes to fulfill some or all of the county's responsibilities under Act 101 for municipal waste planning and implementation of the approved county plan. And whereas, the Board of Lackawanna County Commissioners designated the Lackawanna County Waste Authority as the agency to prepare an update of the 2006 plan. And whereas, pursuant to the request of the Board of Commissioners, Office of Solid Waste and Resource Management has prepared the Lackawanna County Municipal Waste Management Plan Update of 2019, the 2019 Plan. And whereas, the Board of Lackawanna County Commissioners believes that the 2019 Plan is appropriate and necessary to protect the health and welfare of the residents of the county. And whereas, the Board of Lackawanna County Commissioners believes that effecting and carrying forth the 2019 Plan will enable the county and each municipality to continue to realize the benefits of an effective, efficient, reliable, and environmentally safe system for the storage, transportation, processing, and disposal of solid waste. Now therefore, upon consideration of the foregoing matters, the Board of Lackawanna County Commissioners approves the following resolutions. Number one, resolved, the 2019 Lackawanna County Municipal Waste Management Plan Update is approved. Number two, resolved, that the proper offices of the county are authorized and directed to take such actions and execute and deliver on behalf of the county such instruments as such be necessary or appropriate to carry forth the 2019 Plan, adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on August 21st, 2019. And here to speak on the resolution is Municipal Solid Waste Plan Consultant Joyce Hatala.
Good morning, Joyce. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Barb, and everyone else that was involved, because there's a lot of work that went into this. Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank the Commissioners at this time for appointing such a wonderful Solid Waste Advisory Committee, which is called the SWAC. The state mandates that these plans, these solid waste plans, are prepared every 10 years, every decade. And in order to formulate this plan, they say that there have to be certain representatives of the community on these planning committees. Has to represent a city, a borough, a township. The recycling coordinator of Lackawanna County, which is Barbara, our chairman, Gary Cavill. Gary wears a lot of hats. Gary's on a lot of different committees, and he did a wonderful job. We also had representatives of the landfills, environmental organizations, community organizations, and recycling. So we have a wonderful plan here. So I want to thank the Commissioners for appointing such a wonderful SWAC. Now, I have to say just one thing. This plan is going to be in various municipalities, in the libraries, that we hope it'll be on the county website. And even though it says "solid waste" in the title, it makes for some interesting reading. There's demographics in there, demographic data, how much trash is disposed of in the county, medical waste, construction waste, septic waste. Why is that interesting? It has a lot to do with commercial, if you're doing planning, population projections. So it really is quite interesting. And it was just a pleasure to work with everybody on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Barbara and Gary, on preparing the plan.
Joyce, just for the Commissioners' benefit, this was reviewed and approved by the state, correct?
It's going to go to the state after?
After we review?
After you.
Approve it.
The state has been reading all along. DEP in both Wilkes-Barre and Harrisburg have been reading all along. I don't see a lot of, you know, additional comments, but they have the final. So after the Commissioners approve it, it goes to DEP for any final edits, and I don't expect many. They've been giving us comments along the way. We also had a public meeting, we had the end of April, where municipalities could give us comments, which some did. We had about 10 or 15 at the meeting. And we have municipal surveys also, which help us to guide the planning. So that's sort of a nutshell summary of the Solid Waste Plan. We'll have to do it again in another 10 years. So I hope some of us are still around, right?
I hope so, too.
Anyway, thank you.
But Joyce, thank you. Thank you, like you said, to Barb and everyone else that's here. It's, you know, some work involved, Gary Cavill, and everyone else. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you so much for all your work, and I appreciate your time you took to explain everything to us in our meetings. And thank you, Barb, for all the work that you've done, and for everyone that's been involved in this project. So thank you. Excellent job.
Thank you so much. It really was a pleasure to work with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Oteriani?
Joyce, you and Barbara have been doing a great job for a lot of years for Lackawanna County, and we really appreciate your work, and along with everyone else's. Thank you.
And the plan does have, what we hope, the advisory committee came up with suggestions for the next 10 years on things like recycling, littering, illegal dumping, you know, household hazardous waste, just all sorts of different planning. So it really is interesting. Again, people are like trash, it's not that, but it really is an interesting read, and I hope that people will look it over. So again, after it's supported by the Commissioners and approved, it does go to DEP, and we'll make any final corrections. Thank you.
And we'll make sure it's on our website. That'll be it.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, the adoption of Lackawanna County Municipal Waste Management Plan. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0199?
Thank you, Commissioner. This is approving provider contracts for the Office of BHIDEI. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the provider contracts between the Department of Human Services, Lackawanna County, Susquehanna Behavioral Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention Program, and for their providers for fiscal year 2019 through 2020, as attached here, too. And here to speak on the resolution is the Administrator of BHIDEI, Mary Ann Colbert.
Hi, Mary Ann. How are you?
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm fine, thank you. How are you?
Good.
Good morning, Commissioner Oteriani. Good morning, Commissioner Cummings. Presented today for your approval are the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention Program Provider Contracts for Fiscal Year 1920. This year, our program will contract with 52 human service provider agencies, and will meet the needs of about 18,700 residents of Lackawanna and Susquehanna Counties. As you know, these services are crucial to providing treatment and support to individuals with mental illness and intellectual disability. These contracts will provide an opportunity for these individuals to have safe, secure, therapeutic housing, supported employment, and community access. They will also allow for day treatment and have access, allow individuals to have access to case management and crisis services. This is truly vital to assuring that both the individuals that we serve and their communities are kept healthy and safe. The program appreciates the support of the Lackawanna County Commissioners as we work to promote recovery, resiliency, and inclusion for individuals with mental illness and intellectual disabilities. And I am available if you have any additional questions.
Does the board have any questions for Mary Ann?
No, I just am concerned, I did get your information on the LGBT information that you're utilizing.
I did send it up Friday afternoon, Commissioner.
Yes, I did. I did get it.
Oh, thank you.
Actually, I have it here, I'm looking at it. And I think, you know, after reading through it, I think one of the major misconceptions is that LGB belongs with T. LGB is not a disorder. So why they lump it in with that group is beyond me. But, you know, gender dysphoria is an actual disorder that people need treatment for, and these people are not getting, I just, my heart breaks for them, because they are not getting what they need. After reading through this, I think there's going to be a lot more. I'll continue reading through more of it. But, you know, I mean, just some of the negative connotations in this. And I understand that in here you have a disclaimer that you don't agree with everything that's in here, but if this is part of the programs that we're utilizing at this level, you know, talking about the negativity, I don't believe that that's an actual fact. I don't think there's negativity towards the people. I think that it's concern by their parents, not negative, you know, maybe there is, maybe there isn't, I don't know. But, you know, they actually need treatment. It's something they need to get treatment for. And it's not, it's not as cut and dry as people tend to think it is. This is a serious disorder that needs serious consideration, and, you know, we need to look at this in a better light than what's happening right now. And it shouldn't be utilized, an illness should not be utilized as a political agenda or anything like that, because, you know, they need proper treatment. And six-year-olds should not be looked at as, you know, a certain way. There should be therapies involved, and, you know, we need to get that, they need to make that choice at an older age. I don't agree with the therapy that's going on right now with utilizing blockers, puberty blockers, at a young age, or, you know, I mean, I just don't. I don't agree with surgeries prior to 18. I think that this is going a bit too far, and they're hurting our kids. Something needs to change in that. And I did read a lot through, I read a lot of it, and it was, you know, I mean, it's concerning. I don't know if this is the actual practice that you're utilizing. It seems to be, I don't know. It's talking a lot about suicide and everything, but I know the suicide rates, I've studied those, and...
So the document that you're referencing, Commissioner, is not one that has been created by our program, but it is a document provided by the Substance Abuse Administration at the federal level?
Right.
And it primarily focuses on treating individuals who disclose as LGBTQ, as we would treat any other individual who's living in our community who may have anxiety or depression. It does not promote any particular treatment related specifically to LGBTQ, but promotes support and acceptance of individuals, and suggests that they have access to mental health treatment the same as any other person living in our community. And I don't believe that it references any specifically targeted treatments related specifically to LGBTQ. It really just promotes acceptance and support.
Right. That's the point, you know, I'm...
And I know that you believe in that as well, from our conversation last week, that you also believe in acceptance and support. And I think that's really what that document is focused primarily on.
I think that the negativity that's utilized in it is questionable, but we can go over it in more detail.
Certainly.
But, you know, I just, it's talking about rejecting people over time and things like that. I understand the importance of those words, I guess, but I just, there's difference between treatment and acceptance, is my point. And I think that's getting clouded. And I think it's getting clouded by political agendas and motivations that shouldn't exist in the medical community. I mean, we've seen what's happened with the opioid thing, you know? We got politics in how to treat veterans for pain, you know? This drug company made people feel guilty for not treating veterans' pain appropriately, and look where we're at because of it. Gave us a medication that's completely addictive. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're correct in their assumptions when they say that about people. And I just think that more needs to be looked at in this area. And I also had talked about another group that, and I know Commissioner had expressed the same concern in regards with, and I'm not going to mention the group, but if we could do more in some of the areas that we're providing, or how we can change that, I would like to know that as well, to try and get better resources for some of the people that are going through, so that they're not on as many medications. Because I don't believe the medication treatments are appropriate in a lot of the cases. I mean, anything I can do to try and bring more resources here, so that it's not just one, I guess, I would be interested in helping at that level as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, our program continues to promote supporting individuals across diverse populations, and we support access for those individuals to treatment, counseling, support. And similarly, we also work to increase the number of provider agencies that are available to provide that treatment and support.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving the providers' contract for the Office of Behavioral Health, Intellectual Disabilities, and Early Intervention. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in. Okay. 19-0204?
Thank you, Commissioner. This is accepting the Still Meadows Road Bridge Replacement Agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the agreement for the bridge replacement for Still Meadows Road from BT Adams LLC, and does hereby enter into a tender and release agreement. And here to speak on this resolution is Rock Stahovick from GPI.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rick.
How are you? This project is the completion of the Still Meadows Road Bridge Replacement Project.
Good.
It's been ongoing, and this one here will take it to completion with this contract.
That's great. Does the board have any questions, Rock? Okay, I'd like to make a motion, accepting the Still Meadows Road and Bridge Replacement Agreement. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you for coming in. 19-0205?
Thank you, Commissioner. This is an appointment to the Lackawanna County Industrial Development Authority. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna Industrial Development Authority. Robert Savakinis from Carbondale, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2023.
I'd like to make a motion for the appointment to the Lackawanna County Industrial Development Authority. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0206?
Thank you, Commissioner. This is an appointment to the Lackawanna County Heritage Valley Authority. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority. Catherine Gallagher from Scranton, term to commence immediately and expire on December 31st, 2024.
I'd like to make a motion for the appointment to Lackawanna County Heritage Valley Authority. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
I just have a comment on that.
Sure.
I just want to thank anyone that volunteers to be on the boards or authorities for the[1795.87]
I just want to thank anyone that volunteers to be on the boards or authorities for the county, and encourage more people to please look into this area because there's always somewhere where you might be able to help out and volunteer, and I do appreciate anyone that steps up to do this. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. motions nineteen dash zero, zero two, zero one.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a motion to award the Parks and Recreational Paving Project to American Asphalt, the lowest responsible bidder, for the amount of eight hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. This amount includes the following: base bid, five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars; add alternate number one point one, twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars; add alternate number two point one, seventy-nine thousand dollars; add alternate number two point three, two hundred and seven thousand dollars; add alternate number two point four, forty-three thousand dollars. Here to speak on this motion is Rock from GPI.
I have five hundred and seventeen on mine.
Excuse me, Commissioner. Five, five seventeen. Yeah. Oh, beg your pardon, five seventeen. It is base bid five, five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, everything we talked about, the meeting, all the roads and stuff, and the parks and everything else?
This includes McDade Park, Merly Zarnoski, and Islesworth paving around.
Because Covington's new, and they don't need anything at this point.
No, there's, there's no, Covington is part of this project, just the three that were discussed.
Okay, does the board have any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the award of the Parks and Recreation Paving Projects for American Asphalt, the lowest responsible bidder, an amount of eight hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred and some thousand dollars. This amount includes the following. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Nineteen dash zero two zero three.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a motion to award the construction of the Lockwana County Gateway Center to the following: number one, General Trades Sardone Construction at three hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars; number two, HVAC Scranton Electric at forty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars; number three, Plumbing Scranton Electric at six thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars; number four, Electrical Joyce Electrical at fifty-six thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars; number five, Sprinkler Beach Lake Sprinkler at fifty-five thousand one hundred dollars. And here to speak on this is from GPI, Rock Staholvik.
This project is for the renovation at, for the DA's office at the Gateway Center. This will take place, the basement, second floor, third floor, and there's a mezzanine also included in this.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to award the construction of the Lockwana County Gateway Center to the following. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board. Rock, thanks for coming in.
Joan Hodewanat's, one oh one Penn Avenue, Scranton. First, I want to commend you Commissioners for having Chris DiMaggio up here for Festival Italiana, because that brings to mind a larger comment that I want to make. Except for twenty-six years, when I was in the military or in graduate school, I've always been in this area, and probably will die here thirty or forty years in the future. But even having said that, I've lived in different communities throughout the country, and I spent twelve and a half years outside the country, and you aren't going to find another community that is so oriented towards various charitable events. I don't think a week goes by when you don't see in the city or in the county a 5K run, a festival, some event at Naog Park. And I don't think people who've never lived for any time outside of the area appreciate just how generous and caring this area is. And Commissioner O'Malley, I know you've just had the Hook O'Malley run and walk.
Twenty-seven years.
You know, and you and your family are to be commended from that. This is not typical. And anybody, you know, I'm sure young people going away other places to college, or they leave the area for work are going to see the difference. Other areas may have higher income levels, they may have newer infrastructure, but they don't have such a caring and united community. So, you know, I'm pleased. I'm pleased to be part of that community. And I hope that the Hook O'Malley run and walk goes on for another several decades.
My kids and my nephews and nieces have been told that they have to make sure...
Put it in the will. Put it in the will, as a condition of the will.
It's kind of part of it, so.
Okay.
They have to make sure it goes on.
Yeah, but I, I just think, you know, it's, it's heartwarming, you know? Chris comes up here, you know, and a lot of people don't realize, you know, they love Festival Italiana, and they don't realize that any profits may go to various charities that they pick every year, you know? Marathons, we have, everything. Are you preparing for Steamtown Marathon, by the way?
I was actually, I did four miles this morning.
Okey-dokey, well, I'll meet you at Bottom Hill by Cooper's. See you there.
I'll hopefully be crawling there.
Yeah, we'll crawl up together.
Sounds good.
But I, I just had to say that because you hear so many negative things, you know, the last couple of years in the city and the school district, that, you know, we tend to lose our perspective that some of the best people in the country live right here in Lockwana County, and they do. Because they never get the publicity, just the evil doers, shall we say.
I agree.
All right, and I'm glad to see that we have no more legal fees coming up, so that was great. Do we have a running total yet for the government center? I know that you're still going to get revenues coming in, but do we have a current total for how much we've expended?
I don't have an absolute number. I think, I don't really talk at this point, I'll, I'll, I'll say it at this point. We're still waiting for reimbursements and some other stuff, so the numbers really aren't the numbers yet. So once we get a concrete number, it'll be brought up, but it'll be under twenty million. The numbers that they were saying it would be, those crazy numbers which were totalized, well, won't be near them.
Okay, well, we'll be watching that. I did ask, want to ask Mr. DeBilio something. How effective has the county hotline been?
Pretty effective.
Okay.
Pretty effective. We don't get a lot of calls, but the calls we get are all turned over to the District Attorney's Office for follow-up, and thankfully, there hasn't been anything major that has come through, and hopefully, it's deterring anything major from coming through.
My, my reason for asking is I think that every taxing authority, the city and the school district, as well as the county, should have a hotline for fraud, waste, and abuse. And if you've been paying attention to, you know, the last year or two with investigations into the school district and its past, and the city, unfortunately, I think that a hotline is appropriate for every taxing authority to make sure that tax dollars are not wasted, abused, or sucked up in some kind of fraud. And because we have that experience, I think, I don't know how, does it cost a lot to run a hotline?
No, it doesn't.
See? So why not? What we got to lose? It's one thing I'm going to be recommending to both the school district and the city, is that they implement that as a standing asset to the citizens, because the citizens need to know that corruption and abuse are not going to be tolerated anymore, and that's got to put an end to it. We need to turn the corner and change things.
Gary's had this probably, and it's come in, Gary, I would say that this is probably seven years old, seven...
I think it's since two thousand and twelve or possibly thirteen, Commissioner.
Yeah, it was like a year into maybe you being a controller.
Well, if it doesn't cost anything...
I remember the announcement over the courthouse.
Yeah, it doesn't cost anything.
It's a line, that's all it was, I remember the time.
It could be a deterrent, I mean, it's way to go. Let's see. I, I had an occasion to be using the Tax Assessor's Database, which is on your website, which I think is an excellent tool for the general public, that you can look up any property if you have the correct owner name, or the correct address, or the correct PIN number, then you can see if it's listed in, and what it was assessed for, and so on and so forth, when it changed hands, when it might have been purchased or sold. I think that's wonderful, because I think citizens who feel that they need to appeal their assessment, you know, that's an excellent tool. Now, having said that, there are some issues with that database, which I think all the citizens and you should be aware of as Commissioners. When I was reading about the lawsuit that Bank Towers, or actually, Mr. Ferrario was initiating against the county for the rent, for the rent paid for the first floor, I was curious, and I said, gee, I wonder what Bank Towers is assessed for. My sister used to work there back in the seventies, and, you know, it's a little cornerstone thing, it says nineteen thirty, and I was just curious, because, you know, what is it? It's a twelve-story office building, unless you rappel down the side, then it's fourteen stories. So I wasn't quite sure who owned it, and I darn well didn't have the PIN number. So I tried to go in by what I thought would be the address, and I know that it runs from, and this is a twelve-story building, it runs from, I believe, three seventeen to three thirty-three Spruce, and on the Wyoming side, it runs from two oh one to two oh seven Wyoming. I couldn't get it to come up, and I said to myself, what am I doing wrong? It's got to be there. And I said, unless, of course, it's tax exempt, but we wouldn't do that, no, not in this city. There are no electric city garages in Scranton or Lockwana County. So what I ended up doing is I went to the Tax Assessor's Office and the Tax Claims Office, and we looked up the map. It turns out, okay, that the address for Bank Towers isn't two oh one through two oh seven Wyoming Avenue, it's two oh nine through two thirteen Wyoming Avenue, which is that three-story glass building where the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue is. And I went, huh. And I, I found out who, you know, who owned it, you know, Mr. Ferrario, it's in his, it's under like three twenty-one Development LLP or something, some strange title. So I says, I want to wonder what else, you know, they own. And I got the Realtor, Realty webpage up, and they own two twenty Penn Avenue. Yeah, two twenty Penn Avenue, that's that big office building across from PNC Bank where IBM used to be. Well, I couldn't find that one, didn't come up. And they owned five oh one South Washington. Well, I couldn't find that one come up. They owned two twenty-four Wyoming. That one did come up, okay, under the address only, because I, they all have different names, you know, this LLP and this LC, and, you know, whatever. And of course, I didn't have any of the PIN numbers. So I went and talked to John Foley, and he said, yeah, what he called citus, which is Latin for place, the addresses are an issue. So here's what I want to tell the people listening to this. This is an excellent database, and you should use it. It's a tool for every taxpayer. But if you're trying to locate a particular piece of property, you, you know, it may not be under the name you thought it was. Maybe it was under some grandfather's name, or it's been put into the name of the children under the will. So you may not have the correct name, and you probably are not going to know the PIN number, and the address, address might be all followed up. Don't ask me how or why this happened, because this stuff goes back decades when it was part of this parcel and whatever, okay? And, you know, but if you, if you see two twenty Penn Avenue on the building, and it doesn't come up, well, there's usually a fifty-year story of why that happened. What I'm telling you is, if it doesn't come up, you should not assume that it's tax exempt. If you have the time, either call or go down to the Tax Assessor's Office, and they will bring out the maps, they have it on a computer, and they will find you the PIN number, and you will find the property under the PIN number, because that will be correct. But I just want people to know that. I mean, I'm not pushing or against reassessment, but this is one of the data items which happens when, you know, we haven't updated our records in over fifty years. But there is a solution, and I, I think, you know, if you want to check, if you're looking at appealing your assessment, Mr. Foley's office is excellent. They will help any taxpayer who goes and seeks their help. But be aware that there can be some problems with that database, okay? Like all databases, it has to be maintained, and errors have to be purged. If you don't have the manpower to do it, you don't have the manpower to do it. But be careful when you use it, that's all I want to say on that. And, oh, I wanted to ask you, that storm last week in the afternoon, I hear tell there was a bit of water on your Wyoming side entrances. Did you all get your feet wet? No?
Not my feet got wet, no.
I don't know, because I think some of the employees mentioned that, you know, when they were leaving work that day, it was like before, three o'clock, four o'clock in the afternoon, remember the hailstorm and that?
It was a wicked storm.
Yeah, yeah. Because there's a lot of trash covering the storm drains, the corners of all the streets in downtown Scranton, and I, you might want to remind the city that it's time for them. They may not be doing stormwater management yet, but it is their job to clean those storm drains, because businesses were having problems. You know, if water didn't go into their businesses, it sure made the sidewalks and streets impassable for customers and everyone else. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Joan, just a trick that I do with the, the Assessor's Office. You know how every area has their own number, like Old Forge, Scranton, Taylor?
You mean zip code?
No, on that, on that PIN number?
Oh, yeah, the first three digits usually.
Just take those off, and it'll give you the whole entire list of that block, or that area.
Ah.
So then you could see, you'd probably have found that. I don't know, let me know if that works, I'll try it too.
Yeah.
You'd have to scroll through a whole list, though, like of Scranton, so...
Well, that would take a bit of time.
Yeah.
You only have thirty minutes when you're at the library.
Oh, you're at the library doing it, okay.
So that probably wouldn't be, it's just easier for me to go down there and bother Tom.
Yeah.
Well, he's very amenable.
Oh, they're good, they're good.
He and his staff are very amenable, and if a citizen, you know, is looking for information, he realizes that the database isn't perfect, and they will do whatever they can to help any citizen that goes in requesting help.
I'm happy to hear that, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Anyone else? Commissioner Cummings.
When, I just had one thing from out at CCAP that, you know, I think you addressed this when we start, is the, you know, how we treat and recognize how our first responders are being harmed and put in harm's way all the time, and...
Scary, scary, scary.
You know, I, I, we had a couple of seminars out there, but the one was a woman who was an ICE agent, and I just felt terrible for her. She has children, and she was followed home. Immigration Enforcement and Removal of Criminal Aliens from our country. She came from Texas, and she was, first time here she ever experienced protests. So she came to the Philadelphia area, and it was the first time she ever saw protests at, in front of her office, and I don't know if you saw that, where they, they went in and took the flag down and put a different flag up in front of the ICE office or something? I don't know if that's exactly where it was, but she, she said she's never seen this, she wasn't used to having these protests in front of them, and people coming up to her, and, you know, yelling at her and following her home, and, you know, she said that the US Marshal Services are also being affected. And she had asked that if we can just bring this back to our communities to let them know that she's not, she wasn't a political person whatsoever, she, she didn't even follow politics, she was just doing her job as an ICE agent in her office, like she didn't go out on the field, it was her title. So I guess they look up the title of people that even are working in these agencies. And, like, this woman had young children, and they followed her home and protested in front of her house and her kids, and, I mean, this is just getting a little bit out of hand at this point to do this to, to employees, like, that would be like people that are working in this building, you know, being followed home afterwards, and protested on their, their front lawn just because of the title that, that they are, not necessarily meaning anything other than that title, that's their job. And, you know, she, she did end up starting some seminars to try and, you know, break the ice and have a diverse team out there, and, you know, she's created some kind of safe spaces, and she's done a really good job of building trust with the community that, that she's currently finding herself in, and she did an excellent job on, on the seminar. So I guess I just wanted to bring that out, because some of the violence that's happening is, you know, to our first responders, we don't understand, but can you imagine an administrative worker in a government building that has nothing to do with going out as a first responder or a police officer, let alone that, that they're just working in an administrative office, and all of a sudden they're being followed home? They're, they're just working in an administrative office and all of a sudden they're being followed home because of the title that somebody saw on the building and, uh, it's under ICE, you know, under their, their title. So, it's just a shame that people are, they're not going to get people to, to take the job anymore, is what's going to happen. People don't want to apply for the positions, because they're too fearful of, of being harmed and it's a shame. Um, I did want to talk about also the bank building, um, in the articles on Monday regarding, um, is Donnie still, did he leave? Did Donnie leave?
No, Donnie's right there.
Donnie, um, I, I would wa- would appreciate if you could please explain to the public what had occurred with the lease from the bank buildings, because, you know, that was, I, I was, uh, it was news to me. I didn't know anything happened with that. I, but it was news to me, because I didn't sign that lease, so.
You're talking about the SLHDA space over in the bank?
They were told with ample time that they were going to be there.
Well, well, here's the thing. I sit on the, we all sit on the SLHDA board and, you know, I was told, I remember asking about the rents. This is what made me want to consolidate. I was asking about how high the rents were years ago when, uh, when I would just come to the meetings and I'd say, well, why is this one paying this rent? And why is this one paying this rent? And I was told that SLHDA paid their own rent. The county didn't pay that. So, if you can kind of explain to the public what happened here, I would appreciate it.
Sure. The lease in question is an old lease. It goes back to the Cordero-Munchak administration, at which time it was a ten-year lease that was given to the owner of the building, where the county entered into a lease with the landlord to rent space for SLHDA. Okay, so the county was paying the rent for SLHDA. However, we got reimbursed through the state, okay? So, we would pay the rent and then the state would reimburse us for, for the rent for SLHDA. Uh, it was a ten-year contract with re- automatic renewals. It kept renewing through the years until we finally moved to terminate it. We, uh, Sam Sakachi, who was the head of SHDA, notified the landlord in the spring, uh, the year before, that we were going to be moving to terminate. I then followed it up with a letter from the county saying we're going to terminate the lease. Uh, we were supposed to be out by the end of December of last year. We were not, of course, because of the move. We were still in there through February. So, they have filed an action against the county seeking additional rent, trying to carry us through the, the year of last year. They want us to pay.
But they were add-ons. They were add-on months as of the fact of when we were supposed to be out, weren't they, Donnie?
Correct.
They were not, like, they didn't say anything about a full year or anything like that. It was months.
There was conversations held between our former Chief of Staff and the landlord, the owner of the building, that we would be going to a month-to-month lease. Uh, however, it was never reduced to writing. Uh, there was conversations, okay? So, they're now alleging that we're, they're owed rent for the rest of the year. However, the problem we have is part of that lease, the original lease agreement calls for a restoration clause for us to go in and restore the property to the condition it was in when we first leased it. Now, they had, SLHDA had erected walls and there's electrical units that have been put in and all have to be removed, okay? Technically, we're still in there. We, we haven't removed that stuff yet. That's what we put out for a bid. There's a proposal out there that are going to be received Friday and we're going to get bids to go in there and have all that taken out and restore it back to the way it was.
Thank you. And my, my question to you was then, well, why isn't SLHDA paying for those? And you said, because they did not sign that.
They did not. The lease was between Lackawanna County and the, the owner of the building. Correct.
So, so with that stated, I think, I'm hoping that now that we're aware that things like this have occurred, that we go back and review every lease that was signed to make sure that we don't have something else out there for another administration to have to deal with.
Well, at this time, we do not, Commissioner, everything else has been moved into this building, except for adult probation, which is in the Bricks Building, which we do lease, but that's a separate situation there.
But that lease was reviewed.
SLHDA now has a lease with us. They're actually leasing from us, from the county here in this building.
No, I know it's fixed now.
Yeah.
But to bind our hands.
This building, this building took care of.
I know. I, I know. I remember. I was, I was, I was on board for that. I mean, that was one of the things I, I definitely wanted. I mean, thank God, we got rid of all this.
And the only thing I could tell you about, I mean, that lease that was signed back in the day would, would not have, I would never have signed off on that today.
Neither would.
I mean, some of the clauses that were in that were just not, they, they were egregious to the county. However, what was done in the past, we can't go back and fix, so that's.
So, we're held liable for past?
We're held liable for the past, yeah.
Which is, is ridiculous. And, and, you know, I mean, SLHDA is a separate entity from the county. They, they aren't the county. And here we were.
Again, I don't know why that was done. I can't. That was before my time, but I mean, it's a strange situation. And I agree with you, yeah. Like, like I said, right now, SLHDA is leasing from us. We have a lease with Lackawanna County and SLHDA. But for some reason in the past, the county leased the space for SLHDA and then it was reimbursed through the state. But, you know, how, why it was done that way, I don't know. Can't answer that for you.
I don't either, but it was, it's, there's still another, the other lease isn't that way, that, because they're still renting space there. So, is there any?
That lease is with SLHDA directly. That is not, they, they correctly, they do rate space up on one of the other floors for a printing press or something they have over there, but that has nothing to do with the county. That's a separate lease that they entered into with them.
Which is the way it should have been to begin with. So, I just, I'm, I mean, I just don't want to find out, you know, two years from now, somebody had to deal with some crappy, you know, lease that was sent out that we neglected to fix while we were here. I think we should really.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any lease, current leases in place like that. All the old leases have expired or they've gone away and we've, uh, all the leases we currently have are,
Okay.
are not egregious to the county. We negotiate.
All right, thanks.
Most of the leases we have now are for the magistrate's offices and then we do have the Bricks lease and one or two other leases. But the, for the most part, it's, yeah.
It's been trimmed down.
Yeah, greatly.
Thirteen locations downtown Scranton to five.
That's correct.
Well, that was, yeah.
And we own them.
I mean, we were paying.
Except for one.
A lot of, I mean, twenty-five, fifty thousand a month. I mean, that's crazy, you know?
Yeah.
In, in rentals, you know, so, plus utilities. And, you know, that's what we, we stopped. We, that's what, that's why Commissioner says it's, uh, you know, and the, the leases are in, in the payment to the, to the loan. So, you know, I mean, we're saving one point five million technically if we didn't have to pay the loan back, but without it, we're saving two hundred thousand a year. I'm sorry to hear that there was an issue with that. I wish, um, that's too bad, but we're stuck now. So, so that's just something we're going to have to deal with.
Yeah, we're, we're, I mean, it's part of the contract. We have to, we have to live up to our end of the contract.
Yeah, we live and die by a contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will find out how much it's going to cost to restore it on Friday. We, the RFPs are due in then, so we'll review them. I think they're going to Gary's office.
The, the RFPs will be open in your office, Gary?
Yeah, by ten AM on Friday morning, we'll, we'll receive bids and open them up.
At two, I think, right?
At two o'clock.
Public is invited?
Yes.
Where is that at?
It's going to be here.
In the, and?
Boards and authorities?
Boards and authorities conference room on fifth floor?
And Gary has these openings all the time and they're open to the public for people to come in.
Yeah, it's, it's open to the public, yeah.
Thank you for that. I just, it's somebody who's asking me, so I just want to make sure I got it out there. All right, thank you very much and, uh, I hope everyone has a good rest of, uh, the year. Thank you, or rest of the month. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Malley? I'd just like to bring up some of the things that wrapped last week, just as reminders. September seventh, Lackawanna County Commissioners Cross Country Race, McDade Park. Uh, nine AM, uh, I think it's five races, two freshmen, two varsity and a B race. Usually between twenty and thirty-five schools through all out Lackawanna County, even some, even from New York. Great races, McDade Park. Come on back, enjoy them. Great finishes, incredible finishes, the finish line. September thirteenth, Lackawanna County Commissioners are going to be having a blood drive at Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. Ten AM to three PM. Appointments by appointments or Watkins are invited. Please come on in. Blood is life and life is blood. September fourteenth, Heroes Day up at our Emergency Services nine-one-one Center. Eleven AM to two PM. Please, great opportunity to bring your kids out, meet firemen, policemen, state police, EMTs, everybody that's the line of defense against terrorism and makes our safe, makes us safe in our households. Please come on out. It's a great day, free, lots of fun. And Joe D'Orinzo will be, I think, doing hot dogs that day, right, Joe? He's the hot dog guy for that one. September twentieth, ten AM to two PM, PNC Field Senior Health Fair. Great day. Is it for Aunt Fran? Get up, I know you'd get up and say a few words about that, because I love that day. Gives us everyone opportunity to come up, have something to eat, get their flu shots. What else we got? They get to see PNC Field. The weather's great.
Get to see the field. We also, uh, provide, uh, beverages and, uh, little snacks to, to eat and things like that. But it also gives the, uh, our seniors an opportunity to see what services are available for both of their health. Yes. So, uh, they, they can also get the flu shot. So, it's a pretty big deal. They can come on up and, and get their flu shot with their, uh, their insurance card. And, uh, it, it avails them to a lot of information they may not otherwise know about some programs and some things that are available to them, uh, through Lackawanna County. And our, and some of our providers and some of the folks out there as well. We have attorneys that are there who, uh, advise them on some, some, some legal things. And if they need legal services, uh, we also have a lot of the nonprofit organizations that'll be there. All kinds of great information. It's always a great day and of course, a lot of giveaways, Commissioner.
Great day.
Yes.
Great day. Mark, come on up to the podium. I want you to talk really quick about what's coming up. Okay, September twenty-first, eleven AM. Talk about the fishing derby at Merly Sinowski.
Merly Sinowski, for the first time in quite a many years, is for free for the kids, because we see a lot of people come up with five or six or seven kids at a time and they want to fish in the fishing derby. And some of the parents don't have enough money. So, we decided to say, listen, we're going to have it for free. We give out trophies. We give out, um, hot dogs, drinks, and the kids love it.
It is. It's a great day.
It's a great day at Merly Sinowski Park.
I'd like to commend you and your staff, because the cross-country, um, invitational is, uh, second to none. It's one of the best invitationals in the Northeast. And their staff has to put all of it together. Like, it's not just the current trails that are, they have to line them and make sure, because these kids have never run in McDade Park, most of them, and they, they do a tour and everything else. And what do we get? My God, what do we get? About a thousand some people back there, at least or more?
Probably about fifteen hundred people with everybody coming, because they, they trade off on how many people. They have a concession stand there and one school gets it each year and they alternate. They put tents all around the, um, soccer field and everything like that. So, everybody's rooting, everybody coming into the final of the race. And actually, we are already starting to set up the race already. We already had a couple of meetings with the.
Trimming the trails, get everything ready?
Get everything ready for people to run.
I'll be there. It's a, I'd love coming up for the invitation.
Hope it doesn't rain.
I hope so, too. Last but not least, I'd like to wish all the students good luck in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year and to all of our athletes, you know, I wish a very safe and injury-free season. And, um, have a happy and safe Labor Day weekend, which is coming up in a week.
Wow.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out today and thank you for viewing the Commissioner's meeting. Thank you.
Labor Day weekend already?